Charles.
Capron.
Yep.
Greckin.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here and glad to be here today.
Waters.
I make a motion to go into closed session of the City Council to discuss strategy with council about matters that are presently in litigation because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation.
I'm going to second that and I'm happy to do it. Thank you.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Yep.
We're just a happy council today.
We are.
I move we return to open session.
Second.
Moore.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Aye.
I move we adjourn to closed session.
Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
We'll return to regular session in about two minutes.
Moore.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
Waters. Capron.
Here.
Greckin.
Here.
Can we stand for a moment of silent prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Interviews for boards and commission. The Human Rights Commission, Julie Behrens, please come forward, state why you'd like to serve and...
Hi, I'm Julie Behrens, Sioux City. I have served on the Human Rights Commission the last term and I've enjoyed it immensely. I believe in their purpose. I've been a very active part of the commission in all their, many of their activities and events. I've also, my last 40 years of my career, I've worked with special needs families and children with disabilities, have a large understanding of that, and majority of these have been with immigrant families, families from poverty, those areas. Would really like to continue for a second term. Like I said, I really believe in what they do and serves a good purpose.
Okay.
Very good.
Questions?
How many positions do we have open?
Two vacancies come June 30th.
Men or women or both?
Gender balanced.
Okay.
Have to select two males or one male and one female to continue the gender balance.
Okay.
Thank you for serving first term as well.
Oh, you bet. It's a pleasure.
Appreciate your work.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Julie. Library Board of Trustees, Charles Bill McKinney. Go ahead and tell us why you'd like to serve.
Yes, I'm asking for a second term. I've served three years already. I'm very interested in libraries. I'm a retired English teacher and frequent user of the library. We're there about every week, my wife and I. Belong to two book clubs, was on One Book, One Sioux Land. Found the work of the, on the library board very interesting, a lot of interesting, challenging projects. I'd like to continue.
Very good.
Excellent. Thank you for serving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, thank you very much. And Planning and Zoting Commission, Board of Adjustment, Ryan Ross.
Good afternoon. Good to be back up here.
Good afternoon.
So I'm asking, I guess this would be a third term, I took a year off, but I tell you, I get a lot out of this. I feel like it's our job as citizens to help give back and I think citizen boards for the city are a terrific way to do that. And I tell you what, I like the people on the board. I like the staff and I enjoy working with them and I really enjoy the interaction with the people and trying to help them, you know, resolve their own personal issues as well as help keep the city moving forward in an orderly direction.
Very good.
But you took a year off.
I did. You made me.
Well, that's right. So you, so it wouldn't be your third term.
That's true. It'd be a new, a new first term, yes.
Okay.
Well, you know, that, that position propelled Mr. Moore to where he's at today. You might be as successful as him as an attorney and as a Board of Adjustment.
It only took me 25 years though, Ryan.
Time to focus on. There you go.
Ryan, thanks for your service prior to now and, and I hope you get to continue. And I know that when you were at the podium sharing the information for us, you did a great job and helped us understand it and, and I, I think you'd be a great addition again.
Well, great. Thank you. It's nice to hear.
You're welcome.
You know, this is one of the parts that experience speaks a lot. I mean, you have to know what you're talking about and what you're doing and, and I appreciate that because that's what we look forward to, listening to you, you guys tell us what's going on. So.
Well, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan.
Thank you. Mayor, are you here? Because I don't have him on the agenda, but you have to be here for something, I'm guessing.
Item four.
Yeah. I guess we'll go to the fire department then.
Mayor, I'd be happy to defer because this, this isn't as exciting as frisbee golf. So would you like to make a change?
No, no, I... No, we want to, we want to hear from you, chief. Okay. All the money we're making.
Lisa, can you put up the presentation?
How come our screens...
Okay.
Oh, they just came on. Sorry. I apologize. Patience is right.
Counsel, we've been at this new division now for about five months and I think that we have just enough information now to start to get you some decent updates. I've been requested to do an update and I'll tell you that if I can't give you the answer, then I've got Director Hayden and Director Forker here and if all of us can't, we'll sure get you that information. So I've divided the update into four parts, as you can see, operations, financials, challenges and positives, and I'll try to keep each one to some major talking point. So first off, operations, one of the positive things that we've seen during this is that our response times have improved by a minute ten citywide over last year and the year before, which is a big deal when it comes to patient care and it's a big deal, you know, in terms of just service. So I only see this continuing to improve as our EMS personnel get a little more comfortable in our district. We hired a lot of them that just had no experience driving those ambulances and they've done awfully well so far. Additionally, in operations, this was a concern going into this new division, so I thought I would drop the statistic for you. The concern was that the possibility of using Fire Division backup might increase and so we've monitored this closely. Last year, we were using our one ambulance on .6% of our calls and today we're at .1%. So it's actually gone down about half a percent and we're happy to see that. This slide just shows an example of a weekly report that the EMS Training Officer puts out on our continuous quality improvement program and obviously I'm not going to go through that. This is just a sample again, last week's that I pulled out, but what it shows is that we measure everything that happens on every single call and depending on the call type, we plug in whether or not we're meeting the various goals according to our protocols on that type of call. And so what I find very interesting about this in terms of improvement is what we're doing differently and that is, you can barely read it, but number two up there says, "Our airway numbers are down a little bit." We will continue, we will basically make some changes and we're going to center our training around it next month. So the positive thing is, is that we're doing real time adjustments and training based on this real feedback. And you can see by the greens and the reds that we always have something that we can improve upon with this initiative. And the last thing on operations, just a couple of other points. I do believe that we've improved our capacity. Just the ability to put eight ambulances on the street immediately, I believe, is a big deal. It makes me more comfortable. One thing I've seen and heard is that we're improving our Fire Division medical skills as well. We've got these people who are just communicating more, they're around each other more, they're debriefing more on a call, they're going back to the same firehouse instead of other firehouses. So I've heard this from numerous sources, firefighters, staff officers, et cetera, that that's improving. And maybe one other factor on operations is that during these five months, 3,253 ambulance calls, that's up 7% over last year. That's a significant number. We're just running more than we were last year, same, you know, within the same boundaries. Okay? The financials, the first slide I want to show you comes from LifeQuest, our billing company, and I know that it's a little hard to see here, but what I wanted to show you is that the gray boxes show our collections. And basically, if you look at this, in, and that's because we just started. We started sending out bills. We weren't registered with everybody who, who does billing, so we were at $0.00. In February, we were at $20,000. In March, $40,000. In April, $60,000. And now last month, we were at $134,000. So we're starting to catch up. We're starting to see some of those receivables come in and we think that that's a positive thing. And I just want you to keep that in mind as we go to the next slide that starts to show what we've collected. So basically, if you remember, our initial estimate, mine was $600,000, basically that this division was going to cost us. So what we're seeing is with that lag, we're seeing collected revenues as of last week of $266,000. Okay? And our total expenses and encumbrances at $1.7 million for a net income loss of $802,000. But what we have out there at our 45% mark that our billing company is telling us that we're going to collect, we have $634,000 out there that we should be collecting in the near future. So that puts us at an anticipated loss as of last week, five months' worth of data here, of $168,000.
I'm not real smart, but $266,000 worth of income and $1,006 worth of expenses means that you had $1,004 worth of losses, not $802. So what's the deal? Where's the other 600? I think it's your outstanding receivables.
I'd have to check on that one, Mayor. Yes. Are they? Okay. I'm sorry, Mayor, it looks like my expenses were, were a little high. They're supposed to be $1,002. My fault. I must have mistyped that. So what we're looking at here, the bottom note, SPI collected in the high 30%, LifeQuest estimates us at 45 to 47%. And what we just did the end of last week was, we asked LifeQuest to provide us information on other Iowa cities because we thought 45 to 47 was pretty aggressive. We really figured more around 42. There was three other cities that they could provide us data on and their average was 47.66. So we do believe, looking at these other cities, that, you know, I still think 45% is a little aggressive. And of course, if it is aggressive, then that anticipated loss would go up slightly. Okay? These numbers include some of the June expenses, but no June receivables, and it does include some startup costs that we had from pre-January at about $114,000. Okay? Couple other factors financially. The collections is the big unknown, just like I just talked about. We don't have a long enough history to know what that percentage is going to be, but there are some things that play into that that we can control and one of those is reports. The quality of reports that we provide the biller does affect that collection percentage. So one of the focus factors for us has been providing our people training on good reports and also making sure those reports are well audited before they get sent to the biller. Okay? Our other focus is really controlling expenses. That's something that we can control to a degree, but we also know that wages will rise over time and that we will have some new income generation from the events that we're just starting to get into and also the GEMT bill or Ground Emergency Transportation Bill that Iowa signed into law this last session, which basically means that we will see an increase in the percentage of Medicare reimbursement that we're getting back. So we know that there's going to be some positives in there. We just don't know how much at this point in time.
Chief, could you go back to the, the part collected? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you presented.
Maybe I can.
You showed January through May.
This one?
Yeah, so when, so like in January, written off $180,000?
Mm-hmm.
That's what was actually written off?
Yeah. That's just bad debt from, basically, they know...
So that's about, so that's true in February then, Mayor, and...
Yeah. I don't know why March is so different.
But March, yeah, March was different. Well, and April? But you're saying in May, we've written off $314,000?
Right. Yeah, and those numbers aren't necessarily all within that month. It could be some carryover, something from the last month or whatever.
But just starting the first of the year though, right? These aren't any numbers from prior.
That's right. This is just what we have from the beginning of the year. So we'll see write-offs in that 55% range.
That's, that's not, that seems awful high though, doesn't it?
No, not if you get Medicare and Medicaid.
Yeah. It's just, and, and we could change those numbers simply by lowering or raising our billing. So that's kind of what I'm talking about with the collections. We don't have a solid history just yet, but based on what we're charging, what we're seeing around the state is that collection rate between 45 and 47%.
And every time you haul somebody in insurance, you aren't going to get any of it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so I just wanted to point out a couple of the challenges that we've seen so far. Some of these you're aware of. Getting fully staffed has been a little bit more of a challenge than we thought it might be. We had plenty of people on our initial hiring list, but we ended up losing quite a few through the physical process and then we put them through a little bit of a physical abilities process and we lost a few there, enough to where we didn't have enough to fill out the whole division. So we ended up immediately having to start another hiring process just as soon as the first one ended. And that, of course, takes a little bit of time. And then we hired two EMS personnel into the Fire Division. They were on the fire list, so that created a hole in the EMS division, but we see that as a positive. And we did lose a couple medics and an EMT for various reasons. A couple of those, we knew were going to be leaving. For example, we had one SPI employee that came over and told us right up front, "I'm going to go, I'm waiting to be hired in Sioux Falls to be a police officer, which has always been my dream. I'm more than happy to come over and help you guys for as long as I can." And we knew that with the hiring issues that we had, we wanted them even temporarily. So we lost a couple there. And then we do have one on long-term military leave. Playing into that is one of our other challenges that I'm very cognizant of is fatigue. Having the staffing issues did create, our people are working a lot. And then again, we also need to, especially in the future, look at our need to control our super users and our less-than-emergency customers. So we just need to start figuring out how to, we have some super users that are using us 14 times a month, that kind of thing. So trying to figure out what kind of resources, community resources, they need to stop using the EMS services as much as they do is going to be important for us moving forward. The collections lag, we already talked about. I think we're getting on top of that. And overall, not just the ambulance side, they're up 7%, but the Fire Division side is also up 7%, so we're just busier as a department. The ambulance side is running 20-plus calls a day and with the kind of reports that they have to do, that's keeping them very busy.
Okay.
On the positives, the big thing that I have seen and I'm just very overwhelmed with on the people and teamwork, the integration into the firehouses, I couldn't have asked it to go better. And I credit that to the professionalism and the culture of both groups, both divisions, but on the EMS side, the, and the morale, the attitudes, the work ethics, the respect has been fabulous. And I credit them and EMS Director Hayden's staff for making sure that that happened the way that it needed to happen. So, and I think what flows from that is the next positive is the quality we're seeing. I'm constantly getting good comments about that. We're seeing good care, good reports, good service, and we're starting to build some really good partnerships out there in the community. Okay? And the last thing I put up here for our positives, something that we thought that we could improve on from the past system was basically just the public education and outreach. We've got a couple new programs that we're very excited about. One is the hands-only CPR. We've been doing that in, at the 1,500 people. I think we're at 150, but what a great opportunity for outreach. We have the ambulance there and a fire rig there and the kids can go through them and their parents can get hands-only CPR training. And we know that's just going to help us when we respond to somebody. So we're hoping to get a lot of people through that. On the organ and tissue donation side, I have to credit Lead Medic Liz Ford. She's very passionate about this because of her personal experience, but we are the first fire department in the country to partner with the donor network. And basically, our goal is to get more people to check that box, to become a donor, because we know that that saves lives and improves lives and it fits right into our mission. So we're very thrilled to have that program. She's leading the way on that and that's a great deal. And just other outreach, just getting out in the community like we do with our fire rigs and so forth. So. The last thing I'd like to say is that I think we're on the right track and overall, from everything that we're seeing, our estimates from the beginning have been fairly accurate. We certainly still have things to improve, but we know what those are and we're focused on them. And I'd just like to thank HR, legal, Director Hayden's and his staff, finance, city manager's office, and you for supporting this project so far.
Awesome.
Any questions that I can help?
Yeah, I got one. I think the other night, I think it was, I got there late, but when that young man got hit at, headed parked, they said the fire truck rolled in, the ambulance came in right after and the fire truck immediately left, did not stay. Is that customary if the ambulance is there?
Well, I just, I don't know the specifics of the call.
Is that how it does work? If the ambulance gets there right before the fire truck to call off the...
It could, it would have been something on the radio, Mayor, where they said, "We don't need you" or whatever, and they would have released him.
Okay.
But obviously, we try to turn them around as quick as we can so that we have full units.
Chief, when you make the corrections to the financial numbers, can you send council members a copy of the PowerPoint? So I have a base to follow in the future.
So just to be clear, you want a copy of this?
Yes, the PowerPoint you just presented.
Okay, you bet.
With the correct number on expenses though.
Oh, sure. The 1.2 instead of the 1.6.
Yes.
You betcha.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, thanks very much.
All right.
We'll go to the consent agenda, which today is items four through 15A. You can consider all items to pass unanimously unless a separate roll call vote is requested by a council member. You want to come to speak on any agenda item, whether it be on the agenda as I read it or on, under Citizen Concerns, please state your name and address so it can be used for the record later. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Four is the reading of the City Council minutes of June 4th, 2018. Five is the resolution authorizing Parks and Rec to receive a donation from the Sioux Land Cares Mayor's Youth Commission for the disc golf course at Lee Ferriksen Park. Go ahead, guys.
Hello. The Mayor's Youth Commission would like to present the money that we raised for the Lee Ferriksen Disc Golf Course to Sioux City Parks and Rec for $4,500 and that will fully cover the whole, the whole course and all the holes involved.
Can we have your name and address, please?
Carly Gasaway and my address is 3715 Fire Path, Sioux City.
Thank you. And thank you guys for your hard work. We appreciate it.
Excellent.
Can you raise that check up?
Can we give it to you over here?
Yeah, come in front of the microphone, guys.
Well, never mind. The microphone's done with now.
Thank you very much.
You know, I want to add something to this. This is not the first time that the Mayor's Youth Commission has done money for disc golf and I, is this second or third? I'm not sure.
Third.
Yeah, that's... I, I, you know, I'm just so proud of you guys because I tell you, you are, what we do up, these things happen. So to have our, our young kids be involved in this community is a huge deal and you're adding to the community because you like it here, you love it here. We'd love to have you here and you guys are thinking outside of the box. I mean, we're a little bit older up here, so disc golf would have never...
It's just we.
Yeah, yeah, we. Maybe she is.
You're right. I met these guys. So, sorry about that. But, you know, I, I never thought about disc golf, but you know, that's something that I'm going to maybe get out there and try. So, you know, keep up the good work and keep up thinking different, different things, you know? That's, that's what's really cool. So thank you so much for your hard work and donation for doing this. $4,500 is a lot of money, by the way. So they worked hard for it.
Yeah, thank you. Could the others introduce themselves, please? I'd like to know who you are.
My name is Kane Manning.
Come to the microphone, would you? Come to the mic.
You get to do the whole shot.
Hi, my name is Kane Manning. I go to Bishop...
I go to Bishop Pealan.
Thank you.
I'm Kelsey Manke, and I go to West High. My name is Katie Manke, and I also go to West High.
All right, good job, guys. Thank you.
Thank you very much for all you do.
Six is a resolution amending the position classification manual by deleting the position of maintenance repair worker two and adding the position of maintenance repair leader. Seven is actions relating to grants. A is a resolution approving an application for the two thousand seventeen Main Street voucher program. Eight are resolutions authorizing the police department to accept a burn justice assistance grant for the tri-state drug task force. Eight are actions adopting construction documents. A is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Gordon Drive signal replacement project. B is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Rose Hill Park improvements and expansion project. C is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the two thousand eighteen annual storm inlet rehabilitation project. Nine are actions relating to agreements and contracts. A is a resolution awarding a contractor, Subservco, for the Big Sioux River Trail Phase One project. I'd like to abstain on that, please. B is a resolution approving a work order number eight to the master services agreement with Bartlett and West for the resource and recovery beneficial refuse project and the asset renewal modification project. Ten are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution accepting the work and authorizing a final payment to Mark Albinicious for the North Lewis Boulevard Water Main First Street to Thirty-first Street Phase Three project. B is a resolution accepting the work and authorizing final payment to Hydro Clean for the South Gate Drive Manhole Rehabilitation Project. C is a resolution accepting the work and authorizing final payment to Mozart for the City Hall Carpet Remodel Project, which I thought we were getting new carpet here, by the way, we're not. Took care of yourself again, didn't you, Stan? Don't worry about the council. Kind of used to it after all these years with you guys, but...
You talking about in the council chambers?
Yeah.
No, there was no, we're going to put carpet up there eventually, but not out here.
Then when are you putting it up here? Because it looks really tacky having some of it there.
We're going to do it the same time that I redo the council desk.
Yeah, when's that going to happen, Stan?
This year.
Long time.
I know.
Could you give us a date and a memo, when? Because I get complaints on sound, I get complaints on video, I get complaints on a lot of stuff, and not that I really care, but if citizens are taking the time to be concerned about listening in, then we should make everything as good as we possibly can. And this stuff is twenty-some years old.
And we do have that ready to go, it just has to be put in the form to bid it out, so we have...
Going to have file drawers here for the council when you're done?
Back there, probably.
Not going to have them by our desk, are we, Stan?
I'm trying to give you legroom. I can have them by the desk, free, underneath the desk up there.
Okay.
I'm trying to get rid of the supports.
There you go. Levin's Purchasing, A is a resolution awarding... Thanks, Stan. ...order to Brentag Great Lakes for the purchase of sodium bisulfate for the wastewater treatment plant. All these chemicals, I should have paid more attention in chemistry, Mr. Moore. Take chemistry. B is a resolution awarding a purchase order for asphalt trailers, which begs the question, we're going to continue to fix potholes like we always have? Ed, Dave, I knew when I asked if we were going to try to change things and do something different, it was just, you were just, you were just trying to make me feel good when you said you were.
Ed Pickens, Sioux City Street Superintendent. No, what we had talked about was with the aquafall, and we have got that, and we've tried it, and we're having good luck with it. We've ordered more of it. It's really expensive. So what we try to do is use it just primarily on the priority ones, priority two streets, especially in the winter time. It was kind of like what you were talking about, going through and filling the big holes and leaving the smaller stuff for nicer weather. At the same time, through the spring, summer, fall, we have a lot of residential streets, you know, primary ones and twos that need attention. So we're not able to just jump ship to one right now. It's just too expensive.
But the problem is, how many dollars do we spend fixing the same pothole year after year after year? We don't study that, we don't know, but I guarantee you, on Douglas Street, you're fixing the same potholes this year that you fixed for the last three years, every year.
I agree. There's a lot of holes, the water runs right down the center of that street, right in front of healing there. I agree.
But you're using the new, new stuff on those streets?
No.
What's that?
You're not using the new, the new product on those streets?
We haven't, we haven't used them. We used them, the first eight ton that we got, we used it on primary, you know, ones and twos, like Hamilton, South Lakeport. It seems to work really well when we put it down on concrete. When we put a, when we put it on like a Douglas Street, you're putting a, you're putting a patch over a patch, you know, and so it, we'd like to put it where we give the best bang for our buck, where it's going to, where it's going to have a chance to stay.
No, but I look at, Outer Belt really was bad this year, and there's a lot of that was just concrete coming out, and you put asphalt back in those.
That was, some of that was the aquafall, so we're hoping that it's going to stay.
It was.
And the stuff that we put on Wesley Parkway, there was a groove down the center, we used aquafall for that, too.
What color is it?
It's black, black, dark gray. We used it on that, that channel along Wesley Parkway. It's staying real well. What happens is it continues to compress, so we, it's down about a half inch, three-quarters of an inch, so we need to put some across the top again. We've ordered more, we're just, we're waiting on it.
What do we pay?
Get us where you did put it so we can go look at it?
Sure.
I would like to know that.
Sure.
Okay. I know that Wesley Parkway that Ed's talking about, that was a pretty good gap in there, so if that's just compressing and holding its own, that's probably a pretty good thing.
Ed, what do we pay for a ton of asphalt versus what we're paying for a ton of...
We pay about sixty dollars a ton for asphalt from Knife River, and the other stuff is, you just, I had it. The aquafall is, is about twice or three times as much.
That was more than that, that was closer to two thousand, wasn't it, ton?
It was two, it was fifteen hundred dollars a ton.
Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen, fourteen hundred dollars a ton.
Compared to sixty, that's...
But the aquafall has to go on cement, then? It cannot go on asphalt?
No, it can go on asphalt. We found, for us, that it likes the concrete, it seems to adhere better to that. But we could put it on asphalt, too. If we had a new road that, you know, maybe got resurfaced a couple years ago, and now it's getting a pothole, we could put it on that, but like the mayor said, on Douglas Street, it's, we feel like we're just putting a patch on top of another patch that's...
If you put it to somewhere and it's adhering to something that's not well adhered, it's just going to take that, and now it's going to come out as a whole chunk versus, and take what it's adhered to, where we're adhering to something that's solid around it, it's going to, we're going to have a better performance.
Is it an asphalt product?
Mm-hmm.
Because longer doesn't last.
Huh?
How much, how much longer does it last?
Depends on the base, probably. We don't have, we haven't used it that long, but Sioux Falls was seeing several years they were getting out of some of their patches.
Sioux Falls is kind of the one that told us about this. They just ordered six hundred more buckets with water, because it needs water, it's like an epoxy, the wa, you need the water to activate it. So in the winter time, when we're using this and it's below freezing, they want us to use saltwater to activate it, which is crazy, we're thinking saltwater is the last thing it wants, but we're excited about it. We don't like to go back to the same ones all the time, especially in the, in the busy streets. You know, you don't want to have you guys out there, just let, you know, as little as possible.
Can you get it from Knife River? Is that where it...
What's that?
Do you get it from Knife River?
No, we put it out for bid, and we got it, the lowest bid came in from Granger out of Omaha, is where we're getting it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Falls approves total check for May in amount of ten million five hundred and thirty-seven thousand sixty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents. Thirteen are applications for cigarette, tobacco, nicotine vapor permits, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Fourteen are applications for beer and liquor license, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. Fifteen receipt a minute, see the list, come forward if you have any questions. This concludes consent agenda. Would anybody like to be heard on any of those items? Passes four to zero. Sixteen's a hearing and ordinance rezoning two oh five Pearl Street from downtown commercial to casino entertainment petitioners of the city of Sioux City. P&amp;Z recommends approval, first consideration passed March twenty-first, second consideration passed June fourth, two thousand eighteen. I'll move third reading. I need to abstain on this item, Mayor. Oh, you just got to do it on there? Passes three, zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains. Seventeen's a hearing and ordinance adopting a site plan for two oh five Pearl Street and a portion of one eleven Third Street. Petitioners SCE Partners, P&amp;Z recommends approval with conditions, first consideration passed May twenty-first, second consideration passed June fourth, two thousand eighteen. I'll move third reading. Passes three, zero, Mr. Moore abstains. Eighteen's a hearing and ordinance vacating the north-south alley and the block bounded by Nineteenth Street, Nebraska Street, Twentieth Street, and Jackson Street. The petitioners of Community School District, P&amp;Z recommends approval, first consideration passed June fourth, two thousand eighteen. I'll move second reading. Against my better judgment, but as a favor to my friend, Mr. Moore, I'll vote aye today.
Yikes.
I have those numbers. Still waiting for that great, great recap of all the money the school district has paid for, so I'm so excited to see that. It passed three to zero to one. Moving on to nineteen is a hearing and resolution accepting the proposal of SCE Partners for the lease of certain land in CBD Urban Nuala and authorizing development and lease agreement. I'll move that.
Second.
Mayor and council, what is before you today is a development agreement. On behalf of SCE Partners, development agreement outlines the terms related to the construction of a parking structure on the former Liberty Bank site near the Tyson Event Center and the Hard Rock Casino. Attached to the development agreement are various exhibits, including what we anticipate to be the form of lease agreement that will be executed upon the substantial completion of the structure. Authorization by resolution today will allow the mayor to execute that at a later date. We'll be happy to answer any questions. Representatives from Sioux City Partners are here in attendance as well.
Did we get shut off? No, it came up. Passes three, zero to one, Mr. Moore abstains. Twenty's an ordinance amending the Sioux City Main Street self-supported municipal improvement I'm moving, first reading.
Second. Thank you.
Oh, it looked like the lock dummy.
I have one.
Sorry, the screen locked, give me one second. Thank you.
Reg and Cody, Downtown Partners, four eighteen Pierce Street. At our last meeting here, I was asked to provide a timeline of certain projects, where we've come and where we're going. So you have this in front of you as, like even Pete said earlier, as a base. This is a projection that we're going to keep, kind of keep the format, and then just keep updating you with our quarterly updates, so that way you've got a, something familiar to look at, and hopefully then we can just highlight the new points. So today, I won't take as much time as it looks like to go through all of this. I'm just going to hit some highlights, but if you do have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask as I go through it. The first piece you have here, which would be your second page, is project updates. It's literally a timeline. From when I came on in two thousand eleven, there was a board restructure. Two thousand thirteen to fifteen, we made some adjustments, we worked with startup Sioux City Art Walks, Art Space, did a lot of kind of, I guess, enhanced community engagement, things like that, that really took some time to meet with all of the stakeholders as I came on board. And two thousand fifteen is really where we dove into the strategic planning of it all. We went with Brad Siegel for our strategic plan, that was the same time that Roger Brooks came into town, launched Food Truck Fridays, a lot of different things in those couple years that really set the tone for where we were going. Where we're at now, two thousand seventeen and roughly to the two thousand eighteen, end of the fiscal and calendar year, is more of a ramping up stage. The work groups that participate, we hired a business support coordinator to work directly with business. To be fair, that was the best part of my job when I started, was actually out talking to businesses. So we're at a point now where we do have someone else on staff that gets to do that stuff. Lime Bike, we look to launch in two thousand eighteen at the end of July. Ninety percent increase in market rate was probably the biggest boost we've seen in downtown in some time. Wayfinding is at fifty percent complete, and I'll get into that in more detail. And one of the major highlights that has gotten a lot of community response in a positive way is the e-blast that we do every week to let people know what's going on in downtown Sioux City. Looking forward, a couple projects that we choose to focus on, wayfinding, lighting, Moore Gilcrest and Iowa Arts Council, different arts grants for murals, that was a very successful project, and we've had some very positive feedback on that. Data management systems, again, you can read all of this as it's in fine print. Future planning really involves a lot to do with the riverfront and different incentive programs to start facilitating some development and looking at some of our aging properties. More specifically, I did timelines for four projects, one of which is wayfinding. In the white, you'll see where we are now, and in kind of that peach color is where we are going to be. So we're looking at, if you were to just kind of go down the timeline, we should be installing in spring of two thousand nineteen. Where we're at now is final design implementation, looking at funding and securing costs and As far as lighting, we are in the very infancy stage, but the first phase is to do the Festoon lighting, which should be done by the end of August, so you'll see that fairly soon. We're hoping to be done in time for an event that K-Wit is doing down there, is kind of an Italian theme night, so it would be nice to have the Festoon lighting done for that. But lighting also involves several other phasing, which again, ends with riverfront connections in December of two thousand nineteen. The piece I mentioned earlier with art and murals, again, applying for grants, this is all due to funding, and we'll see how that goes, but all grants that we would apply for basically would come due fall nineteen, and that's when projects would need to be completed. Facades and storefronts, this is something fairly new again since Kalen came on board. We are looking, excuse me, to work with city staff on trying to find a way to implement a facade program or a storefront support stallers, you know, do more with the money that they're putting in, and how we can help with that is really something that we want to dive into. Close to finally, our budget, which has been no shock, we usually update you quarterly, just a reminder, when the levy was reduced, how much it was reduced, what we used in unrestricted revenue and reserve, kind of knowing that the Hard Rock was going to be coming on board, today's budget, even looking at this timeline, to understand that it is lower than actually what we worked with in two thousand twelve. So we're doing quite a bit with the funds that we have, we feel we're doing a good job managing those funds, but just to give you some feedback on that. Areas of focus are the three work groups we work with monthly, that's the hundred people that I mentioned are involved. Two thousand ten, two thousand eighteen, this gives you a pretty quick comparison, these are more of our hardcore numbers, what renewal rates we were looking at, what kind of feedback, participation rates, we depend a lot on engagement, so those numbers. This is in regards to events in downtown Sioux City. Sometimes we get asked to do certain events, and this is just to show you weekly events and kind of the ratio of what comes out weekly in those posts. Seventy... of focus, larger projects, and support growth in downtown. If there's anything I did not cover, or if you have questions, please feel free to ask. I know we're here today for the ordinance, but I felt this was necessary, given our last meeting.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the information, and it'll help us track all the activities and...
I hope so.
Yeah.
I hope it's maybe a simpler way to look at all of this.
Things seem to be a lot busier downtown, so...
Yeah, a lot's happened.
Yeah, there's a lot of things going on.
It's a good time for downtown.
You can work from this presentation for the quarterly meetings as well, then.
Absolutely. That's why I'm hoping to kind of maintain a format. That should be helpful, so it gives you something to look at and compare.
Good job. Thanks, Reg.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else to be heard?
Passes four, zero. When does this go into effect?
July first.
July?
July one.
July one. So we have today, which is the eleventh, eighteenth, twenty-fifth, so we don't have to do anything. We'll have to do second and third today.
That was the question, Nicole. This requires three quarters vote to approve it anyhow. How does that play into the first, second, and third reading and all that?
Well, you have three quarters, but I'd rather wait and do it every week.
Which you would have enough time to do that.
Which we should have enough time to do that, just to make sure that people can say they had an opportunity to talk about it.
We'll bring it back next week.
Mm-hmm. Citizen concerns, are there any citizens that would want to be heard? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is David Brown, forty-six, eighteen Cherrywood Lane, Sioux City, Iowa. I am the owner of Tri-State Underground. Tri-State is a local utility installation contractor that specializes in directional boring. I've been doing utility construction for over sixteen years, and I would estimate that ninety percent of that work is directional boring. Last week, the Sioux City Council approved resolution number two thousand eighteen dash zero four one five at the request of the Sioux City Fire and Rescue. This was sold to the council as a way to recoup costs associated with responding to natural gas leaks in the city when a contractor damages these facilities. First of all, I would like to draw attention to the council agenda item number seven from June fourth. It is, I quote, "is for hazardous material incidents and rescinding resolution number two thousand fifteen dash zero six nine seven." Nowhere in this description does it mention the Sioux City Fire and Rescue, national gas, natural gas leaks, or contractors being the ones billed. Last week, it took three city employees familiar with agenda items to tell me which agenda, which item it was after I asked them about the article in the journal. This item is misleading at best, and when taken in context with the accurate descriptions of other agenda items, it appears deceitful. Next, I would ask where the justification for this billing is. Sioux City Fire and Rescue is a public service paid for by our tax dollars. When is Sioux City Fire and Rescue going to start billing residents when they respond to a garage fire? Or bill a car accident victim when they respond to those incidents? Sioux City Fire and Rescue should not be in the billing department of Sioux City. I understand that budgets are tight, but this is simply a punitive money grab. Will the Sioux City Fire and Rescue be billing the city when it is city employees that hit a gas line while repairing a water main? No one on this council questioned how response to these instances was so vastly more expensive than response to a fire, or how thousands of dollars of expense are incurred over and above what would have been spent at the same time if those firemen were in their station doing training, or mowing, or washing the trucks. The chief is requesting just the extra cost to respond, but no one asked how these figures were arrived at, other than to ask if it was comparable to other municipalities in the state.
Not true. There was a graph in there that explained the first two thousand dollars based on time, equipment charges, and other stuff. It was in our homework, so that's not exactly being represented the way it was.
I apologize, Mayor, but I didn't hear any... I watched the meeting.
You can watch the meeting. I'm telling you, it was in our homework, and I'll get it for you.
Okay.
I think it was in the R C A. Yes, it was.
Fire Chief Tom Everett spoke last week of the increase in these events over the last ten years or so. However, he did no investigations into the actual causes of these increases, but speculated that it was just because of more construction and particularly the boring operations. The chief also clarified that this is not to be used by the homeowners or for the homeowners or small incidents. However, any release of natural gas by Iowa law requires a call to nine one one by utility contractors. Additionally, when installing utilities, the boring contractors have no way of knowing whether the marked line is a three-quarter inch service or a twelve-inch high-pressure main. Additionally, we are prohibited from attempting to mitigate the release of the gas on our own. So if we hit a line, it will blow off gas for a long time, and even if it is a service line, it is close to the main, so there will be significant pressure there. This means that any hit of a natural gas line by any contractor will result in this fine. Now, let me speak for the reputable contractors in this city. We do not want to hit gas mains. My company spends hours, sometimes days, in verification of the location of the utilities. We do not intentionally nor negligently hit gas lines. We do not hit properly marked lines. Hitting lines means a significant cost in downtime for my company with no recourse to recover those costs. Mr. Everett said, "They mark them, but they get hit." He may not be aware of the one-call laws in the state of Iowa. There's a tolerant zone of eighteen inches on either side of the mark. That means that under that three-feet-wide zone, there should be a utility. Last year, there were twenty-eight major responses by the Sioux City Fire and Rescue. I can tell you that my company alone could have easily doubled that number of hits because of gas lines that we found to be outside of that tolerant zone.
And then we're not charging you for those either.
You are, Mayor. The way the law, the way the resolution is written, I would be charged for those.
No, you will not. That was already the... I asked that question.
The way the resolution is written is...
And I asked the question, and the response was that the utility, if you can prove the utility company marked it wrong, then the utility company will be responsible.
That's not the way the resolution is written.
Well, then, we'll look at the resolution, but that's what we were told.
Well, and that's why I'm here, is because the resolution wasn't written that way. And that leaves me to try and litigate my costs back with two companies that are very unwilling to settle bills with me.
Well, do they charge you to fix one when they, when they...
If it is my fault.
What's that?
If it is my fault, I get charged for repairing.
Right, exactly. But if it's outside of their, their deal, you don't have to pay to fix their gas line.
I do not.
That's crap.
Nor do I get paid for standing there waiting.
I understand that, but that, but that's not the point. The point is that we're not charging you for that.
What was that distance again, eighteen inches?
Eighteen inches on either side of a mark.
It's that water line, because we messed up.
Yes. But the way the resolution is written, I pay this fine, and then it would be apparently up to me to go to Mid-American or the utility contractor that they use to locate those lines.
Well, can you look that up?
Well, I would, I wasn't prepared. I didn't know we'd be addressing this question today, but I've gone back to the resolution. There are several definitions, which are included. A responsible person for a basic hazardous material response is defined under the state code. So we do reference several code sections that deal with hazardous materials, and I can pull those. I'm attempting to do it right now, but it's going to take me a little bit more time to assemble that information.
We'll get an answer for you.
The, the language that was emailed to me by the, by the attorney's office...
We'll get an answer for you from the utility, or from the legal department.
Okay.
That was not the understanding.
Okay. Well, and that's not what was, what was emailed to me as having passed as a resolution.
I'm just telling you what was told us, so we'll get a response to you, and if it's wrong and needs to be corrected, we'll get it corrected.
Okay. Can I finish? As a contractor, I've had to accept that utility marks will be off, may not exist, or there may be marks for items that are not there. There's no recourse for me to recoup any of my costs associated with this and as part of doing business. Sometimes these are caused because the utility owner cannot locate them, tracks or wires get broken, ground wires get banded together, or the utilities were installed without a means to locate them. Sometimes the utility owner has a poor set of maps that do not show items that belong to them or in the dig area. None of these reasons affect my responsibility to dig as safely as possible. I directional bore many miles each year and have an excellent reputation. Though not often, I have hit items which were my fault, and I fully accept responsibility for them. Sioux City Fire and Rescue wants to blame me for items that are not my fault. The new resolution defines the responsible person for a basic natural gas response as the person or entity that physically causes the break or damage to a natural gas line. This is in conflict with the Iowa code that Sioux City Fire and Rescue is using as authorization to justify the billing in cases of hazardous material response. That code defines the responsible person as the owner of the material. By billing the contractor, Sioux City Fire and Rescue is attempting to circumvent finding the truly responsible person by doing any type of investigation. They also avoid finding the true and clear reason these events are increasing. They place the burden on the contractor of litigating with the responsible party to recover these fines. I do not believe that Sioux City Fire and Rescue should be in the business of investigations or get in the middle of pointing blame. Mid-American Energy does a thorough investigation of every natural gas line hit. My request to this council is to dissolve the natural gas response portion of resolution two thousand eighteen dash zero four one five. It should be in the city's interest to investigate the true causes of these incidents and find a solution to prevent these situations from occurring in the first place. The safety of all would benefit from this as a solution instead of adding money to Sioux City Fire and Rescue's budget. If the city still feels that they would rather put a Band-Aid over this problem, at least amend the resolution and define the responsible party in accordance with the Iowa code and bill the natural gas owner for these fees. Mid-American can then add those costs to the entity that is actually to blame after they have completed their investigation. Thank you.
Here, could I just clarify a couple of points with you?
Sure.
Because I did ask that question about why are the numbers up over the years? And, and I tend to agree with you. I'm not sure the answer is because construction's up. I mean, those lines are being hit for a reason. So bottom line for you, are you saying that if we clarify that ordinance to allow for the, the utility companies would be responsible?
That will, that will do absolutely nothing to reduce the number of gas lines hit in this city. This resolution doesn't do that either way.
So overall, you, you want us, you want the city to find out why those numbers are hit?
I, I think that that would be a better use of resources than simply trying to find somebody for something that may or may not have been their fault. Throwing, throwing money to the Sioux City Fire and Rescue Department because of a gas line hit does not decrease the likelihood of the next gas line hit.
No, it doesn't. But, but a tanker truck tipping over is not a fire and rescue in the, in the normal sense of what, of why is, why do I, as a homeowner, assume that part of fire rescue? Because that's never what a fire department was meant to be. But we've expanded, and when we expand, because we're required to, then we ought to be charging for that, because it's not like fighting a garage fire. I disagree with you on that. When it's above and beyond, and it is because, we have more hits because we're putting cable everywhere. It's going everywhere. And, and, and no disrespect to you, but sometimes cable companies aren't as responsible as they should be there. I'm walking down by the furniture store, because I'm doing a lot of walking, on Seventh and Douglas, and that cable box is that much above the concrete and on the sidewalk. So we don't have responsible contractors out there. Everybody's not as, probably as responsible as you are, and you'd have to agree with that. Some people, just from out of town, they bore and don't even tell us they have a gas leak that you're aware of. That's happened before, and that has to be stopped. Those kind of things are not the responsibility of, of me as a homeowner, or it's not the responsibility of the utility company when a, when a contractor like that doesn't even own up to what they've done. That's wrong.
Sure. And, and I would agree, and the reason I believe that, that the Iowa code was written in regards to hazardous materials was for the scenario of a tanker truck coming through the city. That's an extraordinary event. That's something that doesn't happen all day or every day. And if, because of someone's negligence, the hazardous material that is in that tanker gets disrupted, yes, there are absolutely above and beyond differences for the Sioux City Fire and Rescue Department. Natural gas is spider-wed through this entire city, and it is flammable. I would suggest that that puts it under the same purview of fire and rescue.
Well, that tanker truck tipping over's got the same potential, but, you know, we can argue somatics, but I'm just saying, I don't have a problem. But I do have a problem if you, if you think you're responsible, if our ordinance says that, that's not what we were led to believe, but, because if that utility company mismarks that, we should charge them, in my opinion, not you.
I, I would agree, but that's not the way the ordinance is written.
And we'll, again, we will, we definitely will...
Take a look at that.
Look at that.
And it also puts the city in a position of pointing blame and figuring out who did wrong.
Well, you've been there a hundred times.
The city, you know, doesn't always get things right.
You know what? Neither does Mid-American, neither do you, but we'll just have to do the best job we can do, is all I can tell you.
I can tell you that Mid-American does an exhaustive investigation on, on gas line hits. My issue, in addition to the ordinance being wrong and billing me for it, my issue is this is not addressing the problem. It's throwing money at the Sioux City Fire and Rescue, and I think the better choice would be, let's alleviate or eliminate the gas line hits to start with, and then we don't, we don't have to worry about Sioux City Fire and Rescue trying to recoup money.
So what's your solution for that?
Some sort of investigation. Nobody's even looked into it. We're, we're in the same ballpark we were ten years ago. I have, I have ideas that I would hesitate to mention because I don't know them to be fact, and they disparages people. But there's, there's, there is a correlation to something that happened about ten years ago with Mid-American and a, and a drastic increase in the number of gas lines that they get hit.
Well, that would be the place, it seems to me, to start with Mid-American to gather that information, and maybe it takes...
Part of the problem is, they don't have anybody that they, they got, if you were talking ten years ago, and they got rid of all their own spotters and hired these out-of-town guys, I don't know where the...
That would be about ten years ago.
Yeah, I would say you're probably a hundred percent right, but that we're not going to change that, because Big Warren doesn't want any of his own people. He wants these guys that he can hire for a lot cheaper money, which, at the end of the day, are not necessarily cheaper. And if we begin to bill them because they make the mistakes, maybe that'll change things. But I wouldn't disagree with you. That's the biggest complaint that any utility contractor has, is poor spotting, because it's not the people that, that used to put those lines in that then became the service guys that know where they're at and have a better idea.
Well, and, and no, we are not going back to that. I can guarantee Mid-American's never going to hire their own people to go out and locate again, because they don't want the liability that they're faced with right now. But I was one of the ones that hit one of them. So no, it was not my fault. Mid-American never sent me a bill, but I lost two days of time. I stood there, or I had to stand there and wait in case there was something I could do to help out. The news trucks plastered my name on the news off the side of my truck, and it infringes on my reputation. You know, no, it's not my fault, but that's not what everybody sees. Well, this ordinance, we're getting a little off-topic here, but this ordinance does nothing to resolve this. Let's fix that problem. If we're going to fix the issue of billing Mid-American as opposed to the contractor that hit it, that would be great, but again, that's not the resolution that I saw.
Well, we'll look into that and make sure that it addresses that.
You, you wouldn't disagree the Sioux City Fire and Rescue needs to be there, would you, when an incident happens?
I don't disagree with that. I do have some questions or some concerns as to the costs associated with that. But no, it's a, it's a dangerous situation. They do a service by being there in case something were to happen.
And I, I don't think the intent, I know the intent here isn't, and certainly not for the fire department, I would, I would guess, is to place blame. Clearly, we want to investigate and figure out what causes the incidents, and then from there, hopefully make better decisions so those types of events don't happen. But I would, I would think that as being a first responder, they would be who you would really want.
If we're going to fix the issue of, of billing Mid-American as opposed to the contractor that hit it, that would be great, but again, that's not the resolution that I saw.
Well, we'll look into that and make sure that it addresses that.
You, you wouldn't disagree the Sioux City Fire Rescue needs to be there, would you?
I don't disagree with that. I do have some questions or some concerns as to the costs associated with that. But no, it, it's a, it's a dangerous situation. They do a service by being there in case something were to happen.
And I, I don't think the intent, I know the intent here isn't, and certainly not for the fire department, I would, I would guess, is to place blame. Clearly, we want to investigate and figure out what causes the incidents, and then from there, hopefully make better decisions, so those types of events don't happen. But I would, I would think that as being a first responder, they would be who you would really want there at a time like that, when the line's broken.
Absolutely. I don't disagree that they should be there.
And I think all their fees were based on real charges, and, and it seems to me that it would be appropriate for them to be able to do that, and to be there, in, in the interest of public safety for the community.
I believe the Iowa code was written to reclaim costs associated with cleanup of hazardous materials. And in those situations, yes, the fire response, they go out and, and they cordon out a barrier, or they, you know, they back the, the materials up, they soak up, whatever it is that they have to do, they're physically doing something. In, in this scenario, they're blocking traffic, and yes, I want them there, because there's gas being expelled, and it's a highly flammable substance. You know, and, you know, buildings blow up, people die from gas lines. And nobody's, nobody's resolving that, nobody's investigating that, nobody has looked into why is this happening? I don't disagree that the, that the fire department should be there. I do disagree a little bit with, with, with their cost accounting of what it actually costs them to be there when, I don't want to say they don't do anything, they do. They block traffic, they, they monitor the situation, but they are not out there cleaning anything up, they're not out there shutting gas lines off, they're not doing any of that.
Well, they're also out there, you're taking rigs out of service, taking care of a leak, leaving the rest of the city with less rigs to answer calls.
Sure, in the same way that a fire, or a house fire would take that rig out of service.
Well, it's a whole different ballgame.
I, I disagree.
Well, I don't, I mean...
You've got rigs at a fire, or you've got rigs at this?
Not the same. It's not the same.
I, okay, I disagree with you, but...
You know, a house fire is way different than, than a gas leak, where it could have been avoided. You know, and when you get these rigs out there, you're, you're taking a lot of people out of service, and, and, you know, you have people out of service, you have other people that, that may need, need service, so...
I would suggest that house fires, some of them can be avoided, and it's still the same number of rigs that are at a house.
Well, God, I'm not even going to go there. You know what? This is getting crazy. Let's check in the resolution, see what's going on with it, and, and we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to be heard?
What is the effective date of that ordinance?
I believe it was upon pass, the Saturday after passage.
The resolution?
On the ordinance, I'm sorry.
On the ordinance.
I believe it was a resolution, wasn't it? Just setting the keys.
Or, sorry, the res, yeah, resolution immediately.
Immediately.
Well, it was, okay.
Anyone else? Council concerns? I have none. I worked on them all day, I think they're done.
Boy, doing a good job that way, Pete, appreciate it.
Well, I got two good things, I think.
Really?
First of all, I do, I think a couple of my boys here are going to be real happy to know that ice cream days are coming here in Lamar's this weekend.
Outstanding.
You guys are excited about that, I would...
Oh, listen, doesn't get any better than was a little bunny in my book.
Well, I'm telling you, the other thing I think we all should be aware of, that the Bandits won their first playoff game on Saturday. Am I correct?
Quad Cities.
Quad Cities.
Excellent.
So buy your tickets and show on up. Support the Bandits.
Buy all the tickets you can afford.
That's right.
You need all the help you can get.
That's right. You're going to do great. I wish you good luck, so I'm, I'm good.
Good luck on that.
I'm it.
On a lighter note, this is just an interesting twist. My wife went to the public museum, bought the Sioux City shirt, sent it to her nephew in Boston. He goes to the Boston Red Sox game wearing the Sioux City shirt and made some connections with people that have ties to Sioux City. So I mean, I just, just a small...
A world.
It is. I, I thought I'd just pass that on.
Pretty does, cool.